Look at the picture, really.
Every time I look at it.
Great, now, uh... Just like we've got a council that looks up to it. And he's first up today. I gave him first spot, uh, because we've got something we want to discuss with you, Dave. Request from Tom Digby. Scott, I'm gonna let you just present this to our council. If you don't mind, have you got a copy of this with you?
I do, yes, sir.
Okay.
Tom, Tom Digby Electric Co-op has requested an abatement of taxes to the city. This is a fairly standard process whenever we have either a new industry or an industry that's expanding. Come in and request an abatement of taxes. There's a couple of things that I need to clarify with them, just to make sure we give them what they are requesting. But they've asked for on this form, an abatement of sales and use taxes. They are extending fiber throughout their service area. And it comes through, through Hamilton, so it has their home base, so we're the granny authority on the taxes. And they're, they're asking for us to abate the sales and use taxes on this equipment that they're gonna be purchasing, so that they can extend fiber optics, uh, like now we have a D M A in Southern City, but out in the rural areas. And this is just going to help them be able to do that. And obviously, it benefits more than just citizens of, of Hamilton, it's gonna benefit the area. But it will benefit Tom Digby, which has been a good corporate citizen for our area, and has provided this fiber service to us, which helps us with our businesses and industrial recruitment as well. But I want to clarify with them exactly what taxes it is that they are requesting. But right now, it looks like the sales and use taxes on that equipment to extend the fiber throughout their service area.
Now, this is not in any way connected to the franchising agreement we have with them prior. This is a new request.
It's a new request, yes, sir.
And as he says, it's been a great help to our area. The fiber they've brought here is something we've been needing, couldn't get. They stepped up, now they're expanding out. They expect this to take five years to complete, I believe, through twenty-five. December thirty-first, twenty-five is the end of this agreement. But until then, they'll be in the building phases of their completion of their projects, and they'll need this abatement. So I asked Scott to review it before I brought it to you, to make sure that he didn't see anything that was questionable. He even is gonna clarify further before...
And that's why I just want to make sure that they have on here exactly what it is that they're requesting. But it, from, from looking at the form, everything appears to be in order, and, you know, I would recommend the city to consider it. Their request is fine. And again, this is not an unusual thing to happen with a business that's looking to expand.
This came through David Thorndale, uh, through his office.
Yes, sir.
And he asked us to attend to this business at our very next meeting, so that would be Monday night.
Yes, sir. It looks like they're, they're trying to start by December twentieth, so...
That's why I wanted the council to feel comfortable with it before we brought it to the, for a vote on Monday night.
Yes, sir, and I talked with Mr. Foshee about it last week, just briefly, to confirm it was the fiber optic bill out. It was not physical property that they were expanding, and he did confirm that it was the fiber optics.
Any questions you guys, that kinda explains it in my viewpoint. But I didn't want anything to be surprising and look like that we've had something on the rolling boards that would be in any way detrimental to the city. Everything that I've seen Tom Digby do to this point has been a help to this community and the other communities that we've reaching. I imagine we'll be the only city that'll, that'll probably be built, or would be the only city probably that will grant them this favor because they're located here.
Yes, sir, and I assume they'll probably pass this on to the county as well, if, if the city agrees to it.
What, what numbers are we looking at, these, this one?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things I wanted to clarify, because they've got, you know, the central cost with property tax at a hundred million, which seems a little odd, but they're not requesting the property taxes. But it's just on the sales and use taxes, which we have a three cent sales tax. And so I'm thinking they're not expanding a hundred million, so I just want to make sure that that's what that number is.
Before we actually vote on it, would you clarify that?
Yes, I'll get that exact, that exact number, but...
Okay. I've got the love schedule on this agenda. Would you address that for us as far as what can you know about the completion dates and tentative opening?
Yes, sir, the January fourteenth is the tentative opening date right now. I've not received any communication from Bill, you know, recently about extending that. That seems to be pretty, pretty firm, and I talked to him last week, he didn't say anything else about it. So they hope to be finished up with construction, hopefully by the end of the year, and have the opening on January fourteenth. Be very good.
That's good news. I was hoping it wouldn't get pushed back further.
Yeah, I, you know, I talked to him last week, and he didn't say anything about it. And it appears like it's moving along. Scott, have you heard anything?
No, I haven't heard anything yet.
But yeah, it's, it's coming along, it looks good, and the roadway's coming along too, so that helps.
Are you gonna talk about the questions you and I talked about?
I can, sir.
Uh, Scott might leave us, so I'm gonna ask you to pose those questions and see what... He, he might have better answers than me on that note.
Well, I was, I was looking at, um, you know, the Tom Digby tax abatement request, and I noticed that, you know, I know that Tom Digby has the power on exit seven. And I was just kinda wondering if they might be able to help us with some lighting on exit seven. I know they're really, really good usually at, at digging up grants and doing things like that. Also, I know that they, they would benefit greatly down the road. I'd love to see something like that, it'll, you know, start to develop. I think, uh, maybe we need to take the first step.
You said exit seven, yeah?
Exit seven, of course, I'd like to see exit eleven too, don't get me wrong, I'm not leaving them out, but I'm, I'm just...
I didn't know how to allude to the state's plan that they had drawn up. If that exit starts to develop, didn't they tell us that they had a plan to light that area?
That's typically what they, of course, in their current administration, they're not real big on putting money where pavement's not involved. But that's, that's ideas. They like to see commercial development than, than the lighting. But if, and I can mention that to Tom Digby about, you know, maybe doing something out there or having this. Because ultimately, what happens is the lights get put up and city pays for the, the bill on it, so we can check it then and see. Typically, you still have to get a lot of approval overall, that I think is gonna be the thing that I believe that we can work with them about that.
We had lots on my list that might make somebody want to put business on it.
Exactly, man. Looks close.
Yeah. You know, the chicken before the egg with, with, out, out in that regard, you know, it seems like if you put the lights up, things are coming a lot easier than, things coming, than you put the lights up.
There's a lot of parking that goes on at, you know, right now on the thing two. It's really dark out there. It just looks like nothing goes on, but everybody seems to use that exit, you know.
Just, just so you guys will know, we pay a small fortune to Estes Electric each year to maintain. Those lights are a constant problem for us, they're out half the time. I don't know how many times we've called them to fix our lights in our exits that are off, that are already lit. And, uh, but, uh, I don't know if the LED bulbs is the answer or just what, but we've had everything happen, including a bush hog knocking one of the big poles over and cutting into the electric base. I don't know what all the others, what up. You could give us a list of the incidents out there, could you not, Angela?
Lighting is always...
Lighting, yeah.
Lighting, we have this.
And we can't create lighting, can we? But we've had lots of things out, but that, but that's, that's a good question you pose. We've tried to, so we, Mr. Sibley went out there and purchased that land that's in the rubber bin, with the intent of putting a superstation out there. Then he finds out gloves is coming, and he just don't want his hands with gloves, and he's put his land up for sale out there. So we've got some other landowners out there, local landowners, that have indicated that if some construction developed, they're interested in jumping in also with maybe some of their business endeavors. So I think exit seven has got a future, I really do, I think it'll develop. Anything that we bring up like this for discussion can lead to something even better. So don't, don't fail to bring up things like this as we go along. Any other questions of Scott today while he's here? He may or may not get to stay with us, we welcome you to stay on, Scott, but we need you here for the... Okay. Kevin, you up next? I'm gonna let you address the guys and tell them what's on your minds towards your work situation and your crew, and what you want to do.
Okay. I guess all y'all know the street and sanitation's divided into two departments. I'm over the street side. And anyway, I was wanting to promote Tracy Lee to be my foreman. Somebody to be in charge of come off work or not even be on the job site, what we got going, somebody to make a decision. That's what I was wanting to do.
So how much time you got for the city now?
Oh, thirteen years. He's got the most seniority on my crew.
You know, you know your job pretty well, I'd say, right? Not much of it you can't do. He won't brag on himself, I have to brag on him. But Kevin's making this in the form of a recommendation, and he brought his man that he wants to run with him, Mr. Lee here. I wanted y'all to consent to this, because there'll be a slight increase in Mr. Lee's pay, about a dollar an hour differential from what he's drawing now. And anytime we talk about things like this, we have to agree and vote on it. And we'll probably, if y'all have any questions of Kevin or Mr. Lee, you're welcome to address them. If you don't, then we'll probably put this on the agenda for the next meeting for your consideration.
Kevin, how many people you got working under you?
Is it six, this is... Six, six.
Is the other people in your department okay with it, have you ran this by them, or they, you know, is it just not gonna cause any problems that shouldn't? Should it?
I know personally, I know Tracy, I've known him a long time, so I know he's a good hard worker. I know he's... Well, like I said, he's got the most seniority, so it's not like I'm putting him above anybody else. And he knows the job as well as I do, so...
Appreciate you men coming today. Rodney, uh, let's move on to your area. Rodney, of course, is our leader of our water department. He has a construction crew, he has water treatment, purification, and he has wastewater treatment also. We have certified operators at both of those stations. So Rodney's covering a good bit of space stores, and he has some equipment needs he wants to address with you. And I think his equipment need has been put in this year's budget, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the budget we passed will have his request in it, but I want y'all to sanction him putting an order in for this piece of equipment. Rodney, if you would address this.
Okay. About three years ago, I started looking at this mini excavator that we would like to purchase. But for the last few years, it really hasn't been financially in my budget. And, and I knew this going in, and that's why I never really, I talked to the mayor about it three years ago. I think we decided at that point just not to pursue it at that time because of the water department monies that, that we were dealing with. So we just kind of let it flow down there for a while, for about three years, and didn't try to pursue it. But I, I think we're gonna be financially able to this time, and that's why I went ahead and put it in my budget to get this. Talked to the mayor about it, you know, before I actually put it in my budget. He agreed, he thought it now would be the time that we could probably possibly get it. And I've got a picture of it, I'll let y'all see what I'm talking about here. It's a Caterpillar, it's a three oh four C R, uh, mini excavator. It's just about mid-range, it's not one of the biggest ones they put out, and not one of the smallest. It's just kinda, it's, it's a three oh four. The Creek Department's got a three oh eight, is that correct? Yeah. And it is quite a bit bigger than this one. But I talked with Todd Hunt with Thompson Tractor, and he actually brought one of the three oh fours down here and let us demo it for a day, to make sure that that was what we were looking at, what we wanted. And we felt like it really does the job for us that we want to do. There's so many advantages of having this piece of equipment. Currently, we have a Caterpillar backhoe that's going on eleven years old. And this would just be so much more convenient to, to use than, I mean, we would still use our backhoe, but this would just be a lot better piece of equipment to have on hand on certain jobs. The, the problem we have with our backhoe is the thing is heavy. When we pull up in somebody's yard or on the state right of there, whatever, we, we end up marring down because ninety-nine percent of the time, we're working in water anyway, because you either gotta leave or something's going on to take the water, so... And I can give you a prime example. Sunday night and Monday morning, we were out there on Two Seventy Gate East, which most of y'all were affected by not having any water. But the leak we had was kind of a gully there, we're right there about Martin Matic Drive Lane, Two Seventy Gate East. And we had our backhoe out there, we got the leak fixed, but after, we got the leak fixed, we got the backhoe stuck. And it took us about an extra hour to get it unstuck. And then it took us another hour to clean up the right of way where we marked, made big trenches in the right of way. We didn't want to leave the right of way like that, because state would have been on us then. Just instances like that makes this piece of equipment so much more valuable to have, you know, in situations like that. And two of them were seven meters out in, on the right of way of people's yards. That backhoe is tearing the yard up. When you put your out団s down and things be ruts in the yard. And with this piece of equipment, it would just make it so much easier and so much better about cleaning up. And, and another advantage to it would be, like when we're on the edge of a street, working on a leak, we have to have the dump truck there, putting the dirt in the dump truck. We, a lot of times, we have to close both lanes of the road off, because we have to have the dump truck sitting beside the backhoe. With, with this, we would have the dump truck sitting behind the tricoe, where we can just spin around and dump it. You know, we, we could leave at least one lane of the street open. And that's, that's another big advantage of having a piece of equipment like this.
Probably size too, you probably get in some different places too, that you'd like with a backhoe.
I, I kind of did a comparison today, I looked at, looked up our backhoe, and that thing's about nineteen thousand pounds. This piece of equipment's eighty-eight hundred pounds. There's a lot of difference in the weight, and, and that makes a lot of difference when you come off the ground and you tear it up.
Like I said, this was included in this year's budget. It's a piece of equipment Rodney needs, his backhoe's got a lot of wear on it, we're gonna keep it and continue to use it. But this equipment right here will be used an awful lot in their work because of the convenience of the equipment and the fact that it's not as heavy, it's not gonna tear people's yards up like we've been tearing up when we have to go there and dig. And these folks back here will tell you, it's a nice piece of equipment to have, your tricoe. It does things that backhoe just has, has a difficult time doing. Backhoe's got its place, but the tricoe does too, and I'm, I'm thinking it's something we need to consider getting for Rodney.
And one other thing, because we're a member of the Sourcewell Group, we don't, we don't have to bid this out. They give us the state bid price.
How much is?
It's, uh, about fifty-six thousand dollars.
Rodney, is there a maintenance plan that goes along with that too?
There's a warranty that goes with it.
There's a warranty, okay.
And, and that's another reason, I, I kind of prefer Caterpillar equipment, because we have easy access to getting parts. And they're out here in Tusconbee, they have a place in Tusconbee and one in Tuscaloosa. And they actually brought the, the one they brought up to us to demo was out of Tuscaloosa. But yeah, that, that makes it a lot better being a member of that Sourcewell, because you don't have to bid it out, and you don't have to wait for bids to come in and do all of, go through all the bid laws on it.
That keeps us from getting outside the scope of the rules, doesn't it?
And that, I think it's basically formed so you can get what you want, I mean, at a, at a state bid price.
Well, that would be our recommendation to the council. Rodney's discussions have been about getting him a piece of equipment. He put it in budget, blocked the old selection that we're gonna put the order in. Is, uh, shared with other departments or just strictly for one party?
Well, this is basically the water department. We, we've got our oldest backhoe, now it's down at the Creek Department, they use it basically every day. We're all working together, sharing stuff we need, you know, anytime I need something, they help me out. Anytime they need something, I help them out, and we're, we're kind of all working together, and then...
Looks like a good piece of equipment. Thank you, Rodney.
Yes.
Appreciate it. Wanted Mike to come and give us an update on the new routes that we're running and how he feels about the progress on our sanitation department that we've made thus far. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, I believe. Just right now, we're probably seven or eight weeks into, into the process of implementing our new automated garbage collection system. And anytime you make changes within the city or, or changes in general, there's always some pushback. And we're, I'd say we're approximately eight weeks into the process. Four weeks in, we distributed the cans, got most everybody that should have a can out to them. We started working with them as far as placing the cans where they need to be, turning the correct way. All the things that were on the list that we put in every can that we distributed out. On the night of November, we started using the truck every day. So in my opinion, we're, we're way ahead of schedule as far as, it's what we expected at this time. We, we thought going in that this was probably gonna be a three, four, or five month process before we could really start and using the truck the way it should be used. Start, starting, we started on the, uh, November the ninth. Starting next week, back up a little bit, we had two people on the truck, on the one-arm truck. And we ran it to a place that didn't have their cans put properly on the street or whatever. The guy, extra guy jumped out and moved them around. We put a note on, on the can saying, this is any place you can, here's separate your cans, move from underneath the tree, whatever the situation may be. We did that up until, or we're doing it today. Starting next week, though, we're gonna move into just having one guy on the truck. We're, we're that far ahead of where I thought we would be now at this point. We're, we're still having to run two trucks. The other truck, we still have the driver and two people right on the back. Right now, this automated truck is probably picking up seventy-five percent of the garbage. The other truck is picking up about twenty-five percent. It's actually taking us probably estimating nine tons a day. We actually need about a truck and a half. So we're trying to wean the other truck off some and not have to go to the dump every day. We have to haul our trash to Hable, Mary and Kennedy doesn't have any field or transfer station. So we have to drive both trucks to Hable every day. So we're trying to wean the other truck where maybe we can take it every other day, two or three days a week. The whole idea behind this was that we're limited on personnel. You know, I've got six people, I think, just like Kevin. And we are, we're all strict, real thing. So the idea was to take the people that would normally be on the garbage truck, buy, purchase a one-arm truck, and take these people and, and do the things other than pick up garbage. Better utilize the people that we've got to do things in the city that need to be done. And I think we're, we're moving fast in that direction. We're able to get a lot more things done more quickly now than we were before. But we still have some issues, people. Ninety percent of the people that we started, since we've started, are doing exactly what they need to do. Probably five percent of the people are doing it... Probably five percent of the people are doing a pretty good job. We have to do some corrections sometime. And then there's that five percent left over that it doesn't matter. They're not gonna conform to what needs to be done to make it happen. And so, we're gonna work with them. But eventually, they're gonna have to come around to the, this is the way it's gotta be done, or we can't, we can't service you. But, you know, we're making every effort we can to, to, to keep everybody on the, on the garbage system. It's, this, this sheet that we put with every can is not something we sat down and just made up. We talked with several towns around, Winfield, Newton, Russellville, Franklin County, all that use this same type of system. And we took some of their ideas and we, we tried to make it work for us. And I'll, I'll tell you, Hamilton has more benefit with this garbage system than any other town around. And I'm not making it up. You can check. And I'll give you an example. One of the towns down, our garbage bill is seventeen dollars a month. If you go to another town down the road, their garbage bill is the same and they're only gonna pick up one can, period. No questions asked. They'll pick up two cans, but your second can, they're gonna charge you another, they charge you per can after the first one. So, if they, if we, if they picked up two cans down there, their bill for a month would be twenty-one dollars. Where ours is seventeen for two cans.
Mike, how do they keep up with, if somebody has two cans?
We keep up with it.
Yeah. I mean, how would you tell whoever builds it out in the building?
We, we charge one for that, the two cans.
Okay. I know that, but if you charge for another can, how do they, how?
They, they would just have to.
That individual?
It's gonna, if they want two cans, say if we charge an additional, make it easy, three dollars, make it twenty dollars. They're gonna be charged twenty dollars a month whether they put one can, two cans out.
We don't charge that.
We don't charge that. We charge seventeen dollars. Also, we have a place if they use more than two cans, that they can bring it and dispose of it. We furnish them a place. Don't cost them any extra money other than the effort that they'd have to put forth themselves to bring it and put it in the dumpster. We, we do brush pickup for them. Large item pickup for them. Somebody has a refrigerator or something and can't get it to the shop. We're gonna pick it up for them. If you, and I'm gonna tell you a little bit about the street department now. If you go to Franklin County and go to their street department up there and ask them to come graze your driveway, you know what they're gonna do? They're gonna snicker at you. I can't believe y'all do that. And that's the facts. And it's just, so we're doing the very best we can. We're gonna work with people the very best we can, but we need people to work with us too. We get phone calls every, every day and we work through them. If it's our fault and we need to correct it, then we're gonna do it. If it's not, then, you know, I'm not one of these guys that just gives in. You know, I, I pretty much tell it like I see it. And I heard a guy say the other day, "I'm not a yes ma'am. I'm gonna get it done." And I kind of try to get it done. Regardless, I think we're fair to everybody and we just need everybody to work with us. And again, I think we're ahead of schedule where we, where we anticipated being.
How, how did this week go with it being like Thanksgiving last week?
Well, you know, we started, we actually started at a bad time when we, when we, I said, well, we're gonna start November the ninth. And I never, it never, Thanksgiving didn't drop my mind. But we do double days, did it as you know. We had a few people that forgot to put it out or didn't put it out. But in general, it's, it's no, it was really no different this time than it, than it has been in the past. People, if you change the schedule, it messes us up. And it always does. And it wasn't any different this time. Some cases, we went back and picked some up or they called and if I've got somebody that's available that can run, throw back their garbage in their truck, then we try to do it.
Now, is it more garbage now with COVID, free code, I mean, before we got the truck?
Yes. When we, two years ago, when we were mayor, even, I guess even as far back as when you were mayor, we started talking about this. And at the time, we were, at that time, we were probably getting about eight, eight tons a day. When COVID hit, it went to about thirteen or fourteen tons a day. People were staying home and generating a lot of garbage.
Transfers fees went up too.
Well, transfer fees just went up. You know, we're, we're paying about forty-three dollars a ton of this stuff to dump. That doesn't count our fuel costs, electric costs, any of that. We're telling, that's just a straight dump fee. So, we were getting around thirteen to fourteen tons a day. Now, we're back down to about nine. Some days ten, but on average, about nine tons a day. If we could get it down, and I'm not, I don't know if it's ever happened in life, but when we thought about this one truck, we were thinking that we're gonna be able to every bit of the garbage with this one truck, one man. And that would free up five people to take care of other things. We do other things other than just pick up garbage. We're responsible for traffic lights, street signs, all those things, leaf pickup, brush pickup, putting all these Christmas decorations up, Christmas lights, parades, all that, all that kind of stuff. So, we do more than just pick up garbage.
Yeah, or make the signs. We do, we do.
Well, Kathy at the police department makes them for us and we put them up.
Can we, can we give Mayor an idea of, majority of those signs have been made for years and half of them faded out? Can you see?
Yeah, some of them are fiberglass, yes.
You can't see the names on most of them anymore. They've been so old. Do y'all have a way of checking that and making those, that's time, making a little out of time?
When we see one that needs to be replaced, we replace it.
And some of the stop signs and stuff are faded out.
They are, they are.
They are, yeah.
And hopefully, once we get this, that's one of the, you know, there's a lot of things like that that we need to do and we just haven't had the manpower to do. And that's the whole purpose of this, this thing is, is to get more people available to do the stuff that actually needs to be done instead of hanging on a truck. And I think we're, I think we're going in the right direction. I hope, I hope it be true that everybody sees that we're, we're trying to provide a good service for the, for people and get on board with us. There anytime you, no pain, no gain, so we're kind of going through some of the pain now. But it's not, it's, you know, it's not real bad. We want to generate, you know, if, if every time we drove up to a place and their garbage wasn't put out properly, they had bags just scattered everywhere, and we said, "Look, we're gonna, we'll just stop and get it, put it in there." But next week, you go by there, it's gonna be the same thing. And as long as you do it, they're gonna let you. So, what we want to do is leave it, generate the phone call, get them to call us, "Why didn't you pick up my garbage?" Then we can explain to them better than just picking it up and going on. We want to be able to talk to them and tell them, you know, this, this is the way it needs to be done. This is the way we want you to do it and we'll be able to do a better job for you if you give us a chance. So, it's not that we don't want to do it. It's just, we feel like it's best if they call us and we can explain it to them. You may agree, may not.
Mike, this with the Christmas holidays coming up, I know garbage is gonna be a lot more as far as ton if I will be picking up. But my only fear is, I know there's a lot of trash, you know, from Christmas. And how can we get that over to the citizens of Hamilton? And we're picking up their garbage to get in there. What if they don't have enough room? And they don't have the means to maybe get it down to, you know, to the city shop area down there? I mean, just how can we communicate that and just let them know ahead of time? And maybe if I called, you know, you mean?
Yeah, I think, I think most everybody knows that we have a place available to them to bring it and get rid of it. You'd be surprised how many people come to our shop every single day to throw stuff away. It's, it's available to them from six till two-thirty every day. And from Wednesdays and Fridays, it's available from up until four-thirty in the afternoon. So, there's plenty of opportunity for them to dispose of. I hate to say it this way, but everyone's, the average person makes thirty, the average family makes thirty-five pounds of garbage a week. So, two cans, in my opinion, should easily hold anything within reason. Now, if you got, if you went and bought your son a swing set, you may look at it different, but is that, whoever bought that swing set's responsibility to dispose of that box. It shouldn't be, in my opinion, the problem with the city to figure out a way to get rid of that box. And you feel the same way or you feel different?
Well, I just know with Christmas, you know, families are gonna be getting together hopefully, you know. I know we're fighting through this COVID. I just know from my experience, there's a lot more trash. And it's maybe not big boxes, but from presents, whatever might be going on if you got family coming in. And the last thing I would want is, you know, trash on the side of the road and then some varmint, animal, something gets into it and then it gets strode and you got a bigger mess. So, that was the only reason I was asking about Christmas, maybe, you know, how to get through the Christmas holidays.
Well, I don't say Christmas is any different than Thanksgiving other than, other than big box items. We had no problem during Thanksgiving as far as having too much, too much to pick up. We managed that fairly well in, in two cans.
I noticed Sunday, and that's why I asked you about this week, this past week. And I just, just in the vicinity where I live at, there were a lot of overflowing cans, bags out to the side in a couple of places where it was a lot. Animals got in and strode it.
Yes.
Half a block or whatever. And so, that's why I was asking. But I didn't know if y'all would pick it up or not because of, you know, the rules and everything. But y'all looked like y'all did.
This is what we do. And we ask everyone in the beginning to have your trash in a bag inside the can with the lid closed. Well, we've ran across a few places that the cans full and they've got a bag sitting right on top. Well, he runs the garbage out there to get it. And if it stays on there and gets in the dumps, good. But if it lays, if it falls off and it's on the ground, then, you know, we, we did our best effort, you know. And, you know, maybe he'll go back to lunch and put it in his can and we'll get it next week.
Are those new cans the same size as ones that?
They are, they're ninety-five gallon cans.
Same size?
Same size.
They look smaller.
Yep.
Same size.
It's the color.
It really is.
If they go orange and blue, they look bigger.
Yeah. I'm good.
I'll wait my out.
So, I want y'all to know that we're, we're doing what I consider the, the best job that we can possibly do. Everything is going pretty well. Not great, but it's pretty good. We're, we're ahead of where I thought we'd be right now. We're gonna work some more to get it, to get it better. And six months down the road from now, we're gonna be glad that we did this. And I think, I think y'all.
I think it's a good system. It's gonna work, Mike. Just be patient with it. Let it, let it happen.
Well, the problem is each council member gets calls.
Yeah.
And then we have to call the mayor or we have to call you. Because they're bouncing stuff off saying, "Man, they didn't do this." You know it's created a lot of animosity, but I think the time will be, it'll probably be a lot better.
Well, it's, it's gonna be with the trash on the side of the road. You're not gonna see those blue vans or where these metal things with the containers now running over and full of garbage on the side of the road.
Right now, you know, every one of us has had calls besides the mayor.
Yeah, yeah.
We just passed a lot of them.
I mean, I get, I get calls every day.
I have a question. Let's just say, for example, Lovers Line. I know how Arm is on one side. You get them one side of the street and you turn around and come back.
Yes.
Is?
That's another thing that we do that no other town does. If you live in one of these other towns that I mentioned, you, you may have to carry your, your can across the road. Because they're gonna go down one, one way and that's the only way they're gonna go. And, but, and that's another, you know, the mayor, he's, he's probably more generous than I am, but. It would be better if we could go down one side, but we, we.
We're gonna go down two sides.
We're gonna go down two sides.
Change can be good. We just gotta work through it. I mean, that's what you said earlier.
It's really gonna be a good system.
Mike, the only thing, question I had was, you two with our streets, we had a sweeping service that would come in and ever so often. Is that something we just did away with or is that something we can look at again maybe to help kind of?
There, now, this, that was before I came to work here, so I don't really know the situation for it. And Kevin may answer this. He, he may remember. I think they contracted a sweeping service maybe to come by and.
This is a guy from Winfield, but I don't know why they quit doing it.
Yeah, 'cause I noticed that, I know that parking lot down there, Harries. You know, I'm gonna tear something up if you try to sweep it, but, but the one up here in front of the grocery store, I know, I know there's a lot of trash and that's.
Well, see, that, those, those places are, really the city's not, you know, we've got some garbage cans and stuff set out down there. But as far as services in the parking lot, doing some work to the parking lot, that's not. Those are, either, either been, you know, things or whatever.
Is that something we could maybe get some prices on and just see what, what the contract would cost us? And let's look at that. Man, I think that's something that could help.
The only problem I see, and I don't know if it is a problem, if you have the downtown areas laid out with the bowl outs and stuff, getting up in those corners is probably gonna be an issue for a sweeper. Now, he could go down and get a lot of it. And we do try three or four times a year, especially right before festivals and things downtown. Three or four of our guys, our guys will go down through there with blowers and we just blow sidewalks and streets. Matter of fact, we get it a week before the, the hometown Christmas. But yeah, I mean, I'll be there to look, see if there's somebody close.
Just wondering what the cost might be on something like that.
I have no, no idea. But I, I'll get back with you.
I remember a great sweep when we come through.
You know, we did have some, Kevin remembers that, Winfield, they'd come sweep the streets with the thing and backing it up.
Yeah, I don't really know why they had it stopped.
It's been a while, but they, they used to do it for record, kept looking through.
Did the city pay for that service while, while they were doing it?
Okay, Mike.
I know you're getting misunderstood what I said. I said you were being more generous than I probably would be. I tried to pay you a compliment. I don't know if you caught it or not.
Tim, right. You're next.
That's a hard act of God. I'm gonna find you to that.
We, we have our, our fire chief here and he addressed me on the matter and I told him I'd like for him to make this known to the entire council. And I'm gonna let Tim just address the matter like he did with me.
Well, I've been looking at, our air packs, which we're wearing fires in different places. A couple that we know is that what we're talking about. About coming up on fifteen years old, they're at the end of their life. We have to have the bottles hydroged every five years. And after fifteen years, you throw them away. Whether they're, in, in my opinion, they're still good. But in EPA insurance companies, everybody says, "Look, you can't wire that in fireable." And I thought we could, we've got around twenty-four, twenty-five actually all together. We got them on the brand ten, fifteen years ago. And now they're all come up out of service at one time, so we've still got six months to a year to get some stuff done. I can get some spare bottles with some new packs and take care of the others till we can work it out. I had planned on doing it over two or three years, replacing maybe ten here, five next year, whatever. We could budget in, so I budgeted in seventy thousand dollars so we could do that and maybe some extrication tools. Try to get it around, extrication tools for the past three years, we've been terminated with everything, you know, what's going on there. But I thought I could do it for seventy thousand. There ain't no way. But what I've come to you about is I want to buy ten air packs that will be, ten air packs that have, uh, two, come with two bottles and a face piece. That will be around seventy-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. I think I budgeted seventy thousand for my equipment this year. We can go back on some more monies we've got, we've saved up to get that extrication equipment. Won't cost, won't come out of the budget if y'all.
Would it take all you had budgeted for?
Yeah.
So we'd be out?
I'd be out.
For this year?
For this year, we, and, and I'll be good with it.
Is any other source of income you got there?
Yeah, I mean, we can use some three bill packs, some tax monies we've had, we've been saving, putting back a little bit, some new space time.
Yeah.
And I thought we could do extrication equipment and maybe not the air packs down to five or six this year. But we, we just need to go ahead and get ten this year and then go through, go through the next year.
Does that allow the fines limit what you can buy?
Yeah, equipment.
Any strengthening, strings taxing that or?
No, just equipment like the tobacco packs and all that, just equipment.
Did you tell me there's gonna be a price increase on?
Yes, uh, I was going way back the first of the year. I talked to a couple of salesmen. They said, look, you need to get it in now, but it could go up as possibly twenty percent next year. Everything goes up after, after the first of the year, so I thought I'd better come, we get this knocked in the head and get it over with.
I'm speaking from personal experience, but I mean, when we had that fire on Seventh, Seventh Avenue, um, air packs were just, I mean, I broke two straps trying to put my ass on. And then we're sitting there just gonna go in and do search and I hear something hissing. And I looked at the guy next to him, I was like, is that me or you? He was like, that's you. Seal, you know, having to place seals.
Yeah, and it's getting where we replace seals every year.
And I'm just looking at it from the insurance side of it, I mean, liability wise.
Yeah, same to you.
And, and you know, this, the new stuff, fifteen years ago, you don't get out of it. And we've had it since, I guess it's been, they're close to fifteen years, probably.
Are the new ones better, Tim, than the old?
They're, they're a lot more expensive.
Right.
It's, they're basically the same.
Fifteen years, Austin?
No, these will, will be about a twenty-year lifespan now, so they are.
They're better.
The bottles go out a lot quicker. Your packs never run out, as long as you can get parts for them. And that's what we've been doing, but now the bottles are going out and we can't get on fail anymore.
So if we do this, then you're looking at another fifteen, twenty years before you have to come back?
Yes, hopefully.
The next you.
Hopefully the next you back where. But it will take up all my equipment fund, but I'm good with it. I mean, that's, we're in good shape right now, probably the best shape we've been in in a long time.
Is that the biggest thing y'all are needing right now, is that?
Yes. Yes.
The old ones, is anything you can do with them? I mean, just chuckle.
Put them up in the archives. I guess, no, I mean, uh, yeah, we can't do nothing with them.
Okay.
We can't sell them, we can't give them away, so they're basically scrap.
Okay. And you think about all the heat those things have been put through over fifteen-year period, um, they just.
You know, we, we bought them all on the grant, we got them on the grant, so we got twenty-four, twenty-five. And now they're, they've all come to you at the same time, so we're trying to stretch them out over a couple of years. We start now, over two or three years, we should have everything replaced.
So you're gonna get some next year?
Yeah.
You might have to get everything.
No. I, I, I wanna get spaced out a little bit so that everything that come to you.
Yeah.
All go out of date at the same time.
So you got twenty-four of them total, is that what you said?
Twenty-four, yes. And I'm asking for ten this time, maybe.
Seven thousand a piece.
Yeah.
Roughly, yeah.
Roughly seven thousand a piece, all together seventy-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-two.
The main thing is having a parked truck out because those.
And that's, and that's what we're doing. We can take ten, uh, bigger parked trucks out so that frontline is covered. We can still use the older packs on the reserve trucks and stuff, so they don't get as much wear and tear as in frontline trucks do.
For us to put that on the agenda, you need to get those figures into Angela.
Oh, well, and this was bought through that procure, uh, CBA, we bought the trucks through a couple of times. We're gonna have to get it, remember that.
Iron Bar Group.
Yeah, it's the Bar Group, what it is, and now, it's already been at the base of it. Stayed there, they go by state bid prices, so.
Nobody else would sell them to you and you choose them at my price, is that correct?
That's state bid price right there.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Next item is the proposal from Porter and Higginbotham Engineering. I would say they worked this up a road proposal for the streets that you laid out, Riverside, I believe, and, and Steel Street, a section of Steel Street. He estimates the cost, uh, maybe three sixty-three, three seventy-nine oh two. He said there's a possibility in this cover letter here, he said, uh, I feel confident we can get the cost below three fifty. But for the sake of the grant numbers, we're gonna use the higher numbers just in case. And we'd have a, another match grant of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, that would, uh, cover, a little over sixty-five percent, I guess, of the cost. And then we'll, we'd put in, if it costs three fifty, if it costs three sixty-three, it might be a little more than, uh, thirty-five percent. But anyway.
How much is our part, man?
Our cost would be a hundred and thirteen thousand, three seventy-nine oh two. To put with the two fifty we were asking for in grant.
Okay.
And we need to, we may not get this right, we may not do the paving. Uh, but we need to commit to put the rest of it aside for this project in case we get the grant. So we need to go from record that we committed our part based on this proposal.
And. Is that in our gasoline tax fund or that fund is a con?
We, we can, um, possibly cover it out of the gas. I don't know if we got early enough. We have to take some of it out of the general fund. We got about three million dollars in our general fund and about two million in reserve. That we could work around and get, and find some money if we have to.
Okay.
We want to commit that into this Monday night's meeting, so in case we get the grant. This is coming from the rebuild Alabama money, if we get it. And a lot of the cities around us are getting some of this money. And I heard at the Gas Ford meeting today, some of the mayor's talking about some of the results they've had in applying for this money. And some of them getting money, so it sounds hopeful at least. So we'll address that Monday night also. Today, I was approached by a company called CGI Communications Incorporated. They've been here and done some work for us, recognizing our community, uh, in the video. And today they were contacting me about their company coming back and soliciting, um, our merchants to sponsor banners in front of their business. They'd have a sponsor, they'd put what they want on their banner in front of their business and then they'd have, at the bottom, there'd be a caption or there'd be a sponsor. But what they're saying is that the police, the fire, the chamber and the city would all get free banners. And the city won't be out any money, but we've got to put out a letter to our merchants saying that we sanction them coming here and soliciting our businesses for sponsorships. And believe me, their salesmen, they put a good bit of pressure on the businesses to participate.
I'm not sure other banners make a profit.
I don't know, see if it's in the details here. I downloaded some stuff. Uh, safety spot it there, I didn't spot the cost. Once you said, once you said no expense to the city, I knew where the expenses go and it's gonna go with the sponsors. Uh, but we, to participate in this program, we gotta have at least twenty, um, businesses participating. So, um, if the businesses won't be, um, involved in the banner business, there ought to be twenty full color banners, um, that'll go up on these poles. And then in addition to that, we'll have four free banners that the company will give us. That's the commitment letter, uh, on the cover and, and that's the company. They are a very professional group. I can say that about them. And they did some good work here on the video that they came and made introducing our community to the world. And I didn't know whether we were interested this time in entertaining them, coming here and, and doing a banner program or not. I just wanted to put that out of thought. I'm gonna leave that on the thought pattern till I hear back from you guys. I, I don't want an answer today. Uh, but if you do the copy, if you wanna go online and, and log in and find out something about this company, you're, you're welcome to take that information and log in.
Is that the banner that's on the poles somewhere downtown?
It'd be a lovely downtown, little decorative poles we got up.
That's what we used to have, I don't know, there's some still, there's some.
Mike, is that like the ones that we got up now for the Christmas holidays?
Now, I'm not trying to sell banners, but we.
I am bad shape.
We need some banners.
Yes.
I agree.
The ones we have are well worn, aren't they?
Yes.
This is the only stuff and, and you can do it, customize it to your taste. Whatever you want to go up, if you'll do the artwork, they'll put it up for you in full color. And any colors you tell them to. So you can custom design your own, uh, businesses, uh, sign, banner. And then there's thirty percent of the banner is reserved for a spot, for the sponsor to get his name recognized. So I thought that was very nice. Wait, I, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact number of what it costs.
It's just not on there.
Yeah. I did hear her say it's free to the city.
Right.
Heard that.
So your administration wouldn't, would put the other ones out? So that's, uh, just, oh, they're out there.
I think that's totally different from, I think.
Yeah.
So that's, do you see anything wrong with the banner program?
If that's the same bunch that was here before, I think they were very expensive.
Yeah, they, they ask four, five thousand dollars, uh, from businesses, uh, to sponsor this video. They don't need, get any tapers. No, that's for the video. That is. They, they ask for a lot of money to use on that. There, this is an expensive group, I'll tell you. I'm thinking, I'm thinking probably on the banner program, they would be, uh, three hundred dollars probably.
Whether we do that or not, I'm gonna look at, we have estimates of that.
I, I'm worried if you give it some thought.
Scott and I were just talking about that. I think we could use some of the capital improvement money for that.
Rocks or there's ones we got.
Coming out of the general.
In this case, if, if we were gonna just buy some banners to put up, we could probably use that fun. In, in the case of them, they don't want to pay a penny for us. They want to come here and sell their program to advertisers, uh, the sponsors of these banners for these businesses.
One of the things that's brought, I guess two of the things that's brought to my attention was there in the, the Christmas, uh, we had downtown was the lighting. Uh, being real dark, I don't know if there's anything we might can do in the future and we host something like that over the weekend for some extra lighting to put downtown and just, it was dark. I was down on Friday night and I don't know if anybody else noticed that. But I've had a couple of merchants in town just talking about how dark it was and, Mike, I don't know if that's anything or. Anything that you'd like to look at and do.
I'll tell you what we did a year or two ago. Because it was so dark, we, we went, we actually bought those incandescent bulbs that were in there. So I checked with some people and they said, put LED bulbs in it. So we bought LED bulbs, nice, but expensive bulbs, and replaced every one of them. That's what's in there now. What's happening now is each one of those, uh, fixtures has a ballast in its, itself. So if you put an LED, LED bulb in it, LED, LED bulb has a ballast in it itself. So it, it, I spent a week or longer up there trying to figure out what's going on here. I can't get the bulbs to work. They burnt the ballast out in the, in the fixture, so.
It's not as bright, is it? Basically it's sort of dim red.
You can't tell, you can't, I couldn't tell any difference between the, uh, LED bulb and the incandescent bulb. It wasn't any brighter.
Like them globes, it's them globes are hurting it too. That's, I don't, I don't care. They're not clear.
Right.
It, it tells you on that fixture how many volts or watts or whatever it is is the maximum amount. So we put the maximum amount as far as wattage or whatever, and it really didn't change anything.
At great expense, we didn't improve our lighting.
That's right. And, uh, so.
But we tried.
The, the light at the coffee booth and the one at, uh, Wayne Riggs building, we went back and, um, fixed it to where we could run a, uh, incandescent bulb back in those days. Yeah, we, we actually took the ballast out of it. There's a way that you could. I'm not sure if we put a, incandescent back in there or an LED, but whatever it was, we fixed it for it, it would work. So they're lit now, but I don't know what we can do other than.
Could we change or anything? I mean, would we change out the, I guess what you were talking about?
Globes?
Globes. I mean, I don't know if we'll turn money, we're looking at, but I mean, something clear where it might would get out.
The globe and, and Wade can probably answer this better than me. The globe and the pole and all that is one.
Oh, okay.
One fix, you bought, you buy it as a set, you know. Now, you can take the fixture off of it and there may be a, another fixture that you could put up there. It, it mainly just kinda hangs in a hook up there, so you can take it down and work on it, but, uh, maybe some kind of spotlights or something other than, might be something that we could look at, see, you know, light up a stage or.
Mike, I could bring in some lights when we have some.
The land squares.
Just, just to get light through. Yeah, I guess, right.
Or something to look at.
We've read it's dark.
Yeah.
We've addressed it and had a lot of progress on it. Uh, thank y'all for coming today. I know. I know that it's church night. I don't want to hold y'all too long. And, and I'm very flexible on what day we have these meetings, so if, if Wednesday's not working, you'll tell me a day that does work, then, then I'll be agreeable to, to adjust it because I don't want to call these meetings and inconvenience someone. But I'd rather it work for everyone as much as possible. So if Wednesday's not a good evening for this. So if Wednesday's not a good evening for this, just let me know.
While the, we got the super writers here, at some point, I think Mayor and I and the council will discuss, we'd like to meet y'all as a group or individually and just kind of get familiar with your department, what you want, what you need. You know, it might take an hour per person, I don't know. It might take a long work session, where it might be divided into two work sessions with two or three of y'all at each one, and then, and just kind of go over some, some of your goals. Scott, you can address, you've talked to me about it, and Mike's talked about it, just kind of.
Just to get us all up to speed, what's going on and, you know.
Everybody don't know what you're doing in your department.
Equipment and stuff that we need to be aware of that. We're gonna have to be ready to look at in the next year or two and on down the road. And, you know, one thing I'd, I'd like to see is communication within our departments, and I like that we're gonna be working with each department so that we learn what's going on in each department instead of one person being assigned. But one thing I would like to see, maybe when we start meeting, is having some type of communication with the citizens with Facebook or something that maybe, you know, like Monday, Monday, Rodney, when we had the water, you know, maybe we could have put something out and everybody would know what, well, for majority, everybody would know what's going on. And, or if there's, you know, another issue in the department, we can, we can let the people know what's going on, maybe just a better way to communicate.
I'm, I'm perfectly willing to ask the department heads to come into the work sessions. If we want to give them twenty minutes each, thirty minutes each, whatever you think it's gonna take to get your rapport with them, we'll do it. And we'll start earlier, so we'll have enough time to cover it. We want to cover it in one day, and we'll do it that way. If you want to cover it in two sessions or three, we'll do, we'd like to know everybody and know what their heartbeat is, you know, what's, what's happening in their world. And, and also y'all communicate things back to them, and that's a good working relationship. And I think that often is missed in an organization, is the communications barrier is always there. And when that's there, it's inherent to problems. So I, I like that, I think it's a great idea.
I just think about this communication, it opens the things up to where we can, well, Scott, piggybacking off what you said, you know, some departments, I know, I know in the past, we've gotten in a position where we've had, things have been so outdated in so many different departments, and whether it was lack of communication or what, to where you get hit all at once. And, you know, whether it's found one piece of equipment or whatever it is of your department or whatever, something that y'all are having issues with, breaking down all the time or what, you know, if we don't communicate and don't talk back to one another, we have no way to know.
I want you guys to all make Kevin's Star Truck.
I learned the story.
It's very good.
There'll be something on, that happens at the meeting Monday night that most of you will not be familiar with, we're having a public hearing at the start of the council meeting. That's kind of like a separate meeting, we'll hold it at first. And it's gonna be for the consideration of the stock market, which is on Baxter West. It changed ownership. They're already selling alcohol, so it's not like a new application, but we do have to have the public hearing. That just gives people the opportunity to show up if they're having issues with alcohol being sold out there. We've never had an issue when we've had a public hearing, so I just kind of wanted y'all to be aware of that, but that will happen first, and then we'll have our regular council meeting. And then we'll vote, I'm sorry, just to transfer the ownership, yeah, just on that. And he's, he's done everything he needed to do with me and with the ABC board in Florence, so when it gets to this point, they've done everything they need to do. And then we open it up to the public to give them the opportunity, so that will be happening. And then I'll have two vehicles that we're gonna declare as surplus, so we can sell them on Go Deals. And one of them is that old crammed dig that sits out behind the police department, I think it's been there twenty-five years. I think Billy drove it when he was actually, it was a different color, it was painted. And then we're gonna try to sell the, the old senior center bus that we had that we replaced. We got that bus from NACOG, and we did reach out to them and ask them, you know, do you even want it back? I mean, just for courtesy's sake, since they gave it to us, and they said, "No, but sure." I think we paid them ten dollars for the.
Has any, has that company sold it? We put on Go Deals a few weeks ago?
Yes, it hangs, it's all sold, I've still got the title, I don't know what's going on with it on.
He called up to the station one day this, what's the day, Wednesday, I think he called Tuesday. He's, he did pay part and everything, he's got some transportation company lined up to come get it, so.
Somebody had a time bought it too?
Yeah, somebody in Oklahoma.
Somebody was in Kentucky, and then somebody bought it, some from Florida, that played on mine.
I just wanted to settle the numbers. I didn't know.
That's pretty good luck with that.
I think he's from Oklahoma, so it's, it's been crazy on that one. So, but they are writing something.
Did it get fair?
I think it was six thousand dollars for that.
Does that go back to the general fund? Or where does that go?
It was seized. Back when my husband was the police chief, it was seized. And that money was put, it was used for the police department, then it ended up at the rec center. So really, it's titled in the police department's name. So Ronnie has asked that we put it into the drug fund. So I think that's fair, because to put it back in the police department's drug fund instead of the general.
I wish I had something to sell for that easily. A thousand dollars and that's not bad.
Now the other two items will go in the general fund, but that will go back to the police chief. But that was just what I wanted to mention, I kind of wanted to be prepared, you know, I'll kind of lead you through it. Let me do that public hearing, because I've never had anybody, you know, any problems, but just as sure as I say that, we'll have an issue maybe not, but we're gonna hope we don't. And then we'll go into this regular meeting.
We're gonna have a special recognition of a youth group, that's the very first part of our meeting probably, so we'll have a public hearing right after we recognize our youth group on Monday night.
We got the Super Bowl champs.
Super Bowl champs, we hope will be coming down for us to give them special recognition. And we did, we did win out the championship, and we'll need to give them congratulations, and then we'll let them exit the room, and we'll get right into the public hearing.
What, how should I word this? Are we talking about a certain age group?
This Hamilton seniors, Super Bowl champs.
Do you know, like, the NFL is gonna be here or something?
Well, they got championship rings, I mean, they're not Super Bowl champs.
That's right.
They're sporting the right. I hope they wind up watching this, but.
We're proud of them, we want to let them know it. Okay, with that, we'll be adjourned till Monday night, we'll have our regular meeting
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewstv.